We will call our meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, we will start with Council Activity Reports. The Mayor Thompson is not available tonight. He's off on, um, living out one of my bucket list items. So I had a Park and Tree meeting and then I attended the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference. And that was very educational and learned a lot there. Councilman Hersberg?
All I had was the LMC meeting at Duluth, which was very enjoyable.
Councilman Ranky?
I also had the League of Minnesota Cities Conference up in Duluth, and that was about it.
And Councilman Gilmore?
I had a League of Minnesota Cities Duluth Conference and two Park and Tree meetings.
All right, and we don't have any Department Head Reports. Next up, we have our Consent Agenda, which is the minutes from the Park and Tree Board Meeting on April 4th, 2019. And our vouchers from page one of the, um, what do they call that? Update, update, thank you. Totalling $104,055.77.
I'll move to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. All right, and then for our new business, we have the Flag and Certificate of Support Presentation from Jackie Osterhaus.
Representative two.
Mayor Protem.
Okay. So this is just for the City of Paintsville. On behalf of myself, you know, the country, it's hard to describe, but we just let you know how much we appreciated the support. I appreciate the support of all service members that are doing as well. While I was overseas, several packages, Girl Scout cookies, I just would be letting you know letters and cards, and that just means so much to me over there. So this flag was formed over JTC, Joint Training Senator Jordan, is near Long Jordan, that's where I was stationed for seven months. And so we could, you know, have a flag. Before they flew them behind airplanes, it was really cool, but they had to stop that process. So this is for where I lived for six months, and your guys' honor as a sign of appreciation, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Do you want to take a picture?
Thank you, Jackie.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Make it make to your right.
No, they don't do it behind the trolley box. They put them on the flagpole. Now, so if we're doing it behind C-130s for the combat operations.
I don't want to be any.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Amazing.
Thank you so much, Jackie.
Thank you very much.
Oh, great. Thank you.
That is amazing.
That is wonderful.
Super nice.
Yeah. All right, next up, are you ready?
Anti-climactic, no.
I know.
Ron, you gotta bring up something big here on this lease.
Onto our boring new business. No, the next up is the Mahas Farm Lease and an Amendment to their Contract. Ron, do you want to give us a report?
Sure, um, the Mogus Wellies, we have an existing contract with Germaine, and they would like to change the name on that to Mogus Wellie LLC. Contract is, it's about 105 acres out at the airport, and the terms would all remain the same. It's just a name change. Bill drafted it up, and I guess we recommend approval.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2019-27.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-27. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the TIF 1-15 Senior Living. Do you want to give us a report, Renee?
Sure. As you're aware, Tom Alpaas is purchasing the property from Pat Flanders' group behind the Flagpole Place, and he is requesting a TIF District, which the TIF District is from the ground down. We used to work with Ed Cheetah out of Mankato, but he had some medical issues and he's unable to work with us. So I contacted Northland Securities. Tammy Omdahl there that helps us with our tax abatement has, is also their TIF person, and she has worked with Tom on previous projects, just by coincidence. And so the cost of their service, the $9,000 that's in the financial planning agreement, would be rebuilt out to Mr. Omdahl, or Mr. Alpaas, when the TIF is done. So he'll reverse that. There won't be any cost to the city for that. Right now, they are working on the preliminary to show the value that is needed to make this a go. She's hoping to have those figures by the end of the week. And then this would go to EDAP next week for the Economic Development's approval or support. So tonight, basically, it's the agreement with Northland Securities for the $9,000 and for them to go through the process. They do notify us of when to put the postings out there. They'll send out all the letters. They'll work with us. They'll do all the filing to the state. And then the second action for tonight is to call for the public hearing. And so if things don't line up, then the worst thing is we'd have to reset the public hearing. But she'll be taking care of all the county notifications, so they're out by next week. Any questions, concerns, or non-interest of doing a TIF District with them?
All right, well, then I will entertain a motion to approve the agreement with Northland Securities.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Gilmore and a second by Councilman Ranky to approve the financial planning agreement between the City of Paintsville and Northland Securities Incorporated. Any more discussion on that?
Renee, just to clarify if I can, if for some reason the TIF does not get approved, Mr. Alpats is still on the hook for that $9,000 that we're paying for this, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, 100%. And they are aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2019-28, calling for a public hearing on the proposed modification of Development District Number One and the establishment of Tax Increment Financing District Number 1 through 16 within the Development District and adoption of the modified development program and the adoption of the Tax Increment Financing Plan relating to their two.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. As on the action sheet there, I'm not going to repeat all that. Is there any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Thank you.
And then?
Page 15.
Getting there. All right. Next up, we have our T-Hanger Lease Agreement. Ron, do you want to give us a report on that, please?
Sure, Chris Howard had been in that. Chris moved over to the hangar that was vacated. One of the private ones, I think it was number 103. And so the next person on our waiting list is this Gary Raddell. And he has signed the agreement, and I guess we would recommend moving forward with that as well.
I'll make the motion to approve the T-Hanger Lease Agreement between the City of Paintsville and Garrett Raddell for Hangar Number 19.
I'll second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Oh, and now we're getting to the good stuff. Our Park and Tree Committee has been working long and hard on this playground equipment, so. Ron, do you want to give us an update on that one?
Sure, I guess I can start. I think everybody at the council is well aware. Last year, the council authorized the park committee to come up with a plan for park equipment. And I think the first thing the committee did was identified which parks, you know, we do have the major parks, the gazebo park, Veterans Park, Ampe Park, and the Community Park. And the committee came up with targeting the gazebo and Veterans Park. And I think the next thing we did, went out and looked at a couple different vendors. And after a while, we did choose the landscape structures here. And with that, looked at the Veterans Park first. What did we have existing out there is a jungle gym that was put in, about, well, close to 30 years old now. And then the other item out there is the swing sets, and they're the original sets when the park was built, roughly in the late 60s, early 70s somewheres. And with that, what we came up with, it's called a PlaySense Design 600 along with some swing sets. And with that, it includes a lot of little bells and whistles. Target age group initially, we started out with the 2 to 5, and after we looked at that, we felt we should go up to target the age group of the 5 to 12-year-olds. Because a lot of the littler kids are going to play on that regardless. But it's got the, you know, loophole, a little bell ring, a horizontal ladder, a vertical ladder, a lot of little things that that age group would go with. Our price at the Veterans Park for all that equipment, this includes the swing set, includes labor to put it up, And over at the Gazebo Park, currently, I think everybody's aware, we don't have any actual park equipment there. You know, we do have the splash pad there, which we think this is going to complement the splash pad quite heavily. And, but there is a peg bridge there, a A-frame cargo net, a jump hang. I think it's like, what is it, 85 inches on the one side, and I think it's 45 on the other. So they're supposed to jump up, grab it, crawl across it, a rope climb. And then there was a ozone, there was the option of a three-ring or a seven-ring. The cost difference in this was $13,236. The committee felt this is a long-term project. It's going to be here for 20 years. So their recommendation was to go with the seven-ring climber. Then there's a spider walk, and then we do also have the ADA items there. There's two of them. There's a hand cycler and a thigh tri-wheel. It's not only for handicap, it can be used for, you know, little kids also, older adults, et cetera. The total cost there with the seven-ring hangar was $80,699.82. And with our local costs, you know, mainly, we'll be landscaping. The committee recommended a total project budget of $117,000. So, Lanter, Alicia, I don't know if you want to?
One of the things was going through landscape structures, Lewis Industries does a lot of their products for them, and they will pick up all the freight.
That is correct.
Which was, you said was like $1,100 or something?
Yep. It's actually a little more, $5.50 on the one, and I think it was $7.50 on the other one.
So that was kind of a nice donation.
Well, that is, that is wonderful. Did I miss it, Ron? Did you talk about the swings at Gazebo Park?
The swings at Gazebo Park, I did not.
Okay. Yep, so we, that, that was included in that price as well, was a pretty extensive swing set. One of them is like the friendship swing where two people can sit on it. And then there's the bucket swing, and then infant swing, and then three of the regular.
There's actually two, two infant swings.
Is there two infants?
Yes. One's a cradles them all, one's a regular child or toddler swing, and the other one's, I think they call it a bucket swing.
Okay. And then the friendship swing is, is in there as well?
Yeah, you can see the black one right there. There's the bucket swing, or the friendship swing. What we tried to do is, the, we didn't want to get the same thing as they have at the playground. And this is more of a fitness-oriented where they got to play, jump around. And it's not anything near what school has.
Right, and there's actually nothing quite like this. I mean, we're in the near vicinity of Paintsville, so it may be something that would draw other people to our community.
So that's the kind of, we kind of went with this option with those, and plus with the, we wanted to make sure we had ADA equipment, so they can play with that also. And if you look at the bottom of that, then there's going to be, um, it'll all be cemented up to the pad where the, that one is right there. You see the square with the two little kids on it? So the wheelchairs or whatever can get up there and play. So we're kind of meshing out. And today, we went over there and laid it out, how we kind of like to, how it meshes up. So basically, mom or daddy can sit almost in the middle and watch the splash pad in both systems. So you're not chasing around looking for them.
Awesome.
So that's what we kind of came up with on that avenue.
Both parks have handicap equipment? Does, uh, no, Veterans is?
The one item that we do at Veterans Park, there's a little, it's an existing scooper, sand scooper. That is handicap accessible and does have a ramp in there, and so that will remain.
The Veterans Park playground equipment also has sort of a musical theme, and so there's some, like, bongo kind of things. I don't think you can see it in the pictures. It's on the backside of those. But there is some musical instruments that I think handicap or smaller children would be able to, it'd be at a good height for them. If it shows it on the... Shows it on this page 28. It's kind of hard to see, but those little bongos there, those are, I think, down at the ground level.
Right there.
Mm-hmm. Does that answer your question?
More or less.
All right.
I think we've all decided the need is there, so I'll make the motion to approve the proposal for Vets Park in the amount of $32,627.14, and the seven-ring climber proposal for Gazebo Park in the amount of $80,699.82 for a total cost of equipment installation of the landscape structures in the amount of $113,326.96 to cover all costs with a total budget of $117,000.
And Your Honor, could you add that this would be coming out of reserves? Neil, could you add that this would be coming out of reserves?
Okay, this funding becoming out of reserves.
I'll second that.
All right, we have the motion to approve the proposal for those two park equipments for a total budget of $117,000 out of reserves. Is there any further discussion on that?
I had one question. If we, I know I've seen some swings made for kids who use wheelchairs and things like that, but I don't see any on these plans. Are these sets and stuff adaptable so that if we get equipment like that in the future, we can incorporate it into the setup?
It's all with the fiber, so yeah, that module could be sent in.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's not there now, but in the future, if there's a better need for it, we can make it more accessible.
Especially at Gazebo, because we have the cement there, so we could run it out the one direction or the other.
That answers my question. Thanks.
That's a good question. Anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. I'm excited for that one. All right, next up is page 46 of our agenda, the AMPI Expansion Project. Ron or Chuck, would you like to give us a report on that?
Yeah, I can give a quick update on the AMPI Expansion Project. We had the pre-construction meeting last week. The contractors have plans to begin construction on that project starting the week of July 29th. So they'll be planning to work on the new pretreatment building out at the wastewater plant as well as the piping connecting the two at the same time. So, so we should see some construction activity starting here in a couple weeks.
Will there be road closures with that?
Uh, no, most of it will be, you know, there may be a time when the intersection of Railroad and Washburn will be closed when they do that connection for, but that probably will be a short, short duration, a day or two probably when they do that.
Okay. All right, and we don't have any action on that one. How about the 2019 Street and Drainage Project?
Yeah, an update on the 2019 Improvement Project. The underground utility work along Hudson Street is complete, so they're now working on rebuilding that street. Actually, the gravel or aggregate base is being installed today. They started construction on Belmont today as well. So they'll be working on the underground construction along there over the next week or, week or two. In addition, down in the Aquatic Edition, they did reclaim some of the streets as well. They ground up the existing pavement down there along Maple Street, Circle Pines Court, Service Road, and Ponderosa. So once they're done with Belmont, they'll be jumping down there to start the utilities along that, in that area. So, in addition, in your pack, it is a copy of Pay Request Number One for Voss Plumbing and Heating. It covers all the work completed during June through June 27th and amounts to $241,677.15. We have reviewed it and recommend approval.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve payment estimate number one, Payable to Voss Plumbing and Heating, Inc. in the amount of $241,677.15.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the payment estimate number one. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And next, we have the demolition of the homes on Mini Street. Ron, would you give us a report on that, please?
Sure, the 2019 Street Project, on the drainage portion of that, I think everyone's aware of the two homes that the city acquired for putting the pond on there. The one has been burned down by the fire department. The, thanks for their contribution towards this. We do have two prices to remove the structures. And Voss Plumbing and Heating of Paintsville here was low at $19,000. And the other one, the MACAC, that is the same company that did the asbestos checks on the house. They also do demos, but obviously, they were a little bit higher. I guess we would see no reason why not to approve it, so.
Now, the bid said the fire department has to burn down the other one yet. Do you know when that's scheduled? I forgot.
The 20th second, I believe it is.
And you know when they're going to start with the whole demo, or when you need them to start running?
I believe, once they're done with the workover salt of 55, they will move over there, and that'll probably be the first thing done.
Okay.
So realistically, mid-August. Chuck, would you?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would probably be the soonest I would imagine, if they wait till they're done down there.
Move to approve the quote from Voss Plumbing and Heating LLC in the amount of $19,000 and recommend. Second.
We, we can probably just put a period after the $19,000, right? We know.
Yes.
We're not, yeah, perfect. All right, so we have a motion to approve the quote from Voss Plumbing and Heating LLC in the amount of $19,000. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And last up, we have the Auditor Arrangement Letter for 2019, 2020, and 2021 audits.
Your Honors, this is, putting in writing previously, we, I presented to the council in April, a proposal from the current auditing company. This is just solidifying those numbers. There's no changes, just putting it in the contract for the next three years.
Anybody have any questions on that one?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the arrangement letter between the City of Paintsville and Schlender, Werner, and Company to perform the 2019, 2020, and 2021 audits.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the arrangement letter between the City of Paintsville and Schlender, Werner, and Company to perform the 2019, 2020, 2021 audits. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And for our informational, we've got the June Liquor Store Reports. The Minnesota Board of Peace Officer Standards and Training, they came and reviewed our police policy and training, and they passed the review. We have the, oh, the Board of Appeal and Equalization Training, that's now available. Fantastic! So we are required to have at least one voting board member present at our Board of Appeal and Equalization Training or Meetings. And currently, I am the only one on the council that is certified.
Perfect.
And so this last spring, I was out of town when we initially had it scheduled, and so we had to reschedule because I was not going to be there. So it would be fantastic if one of our other council members could go online to their website. It's very easy. You register, and then they send you an email with a user ID and password. And then you go on and take the training, and it's fairly simple.
Very simple.
And it doesn't take a whole lot of time, and it'd be wonderful if one of you guys could do that.
And then when the prints of your certificate, please bring it in so I can make a copy. It is not difficult. It's very, very simple.
Sean, bring it in and I'll give it to Renee. I thought Neil was going to do it on the computer.
Right.
I, I think you can even come into City Hall if you need use of a computer to do that, Neil.
You can use your computer right here.
It's the time thing. I'm just.
It's like 20 minutes probably, I'm sure.
More time at City Hall, right?
We could tack it on to the end of our next code meeting for you, Neil.
I'm pretty stressed, though.
All right, it just would be great. I put in my little plug, and now I'm done. And then the last thing on our informational is on our update. The Stearns County Environmental Office Conditional Use Public Hearing Notice for Thursday, July 18th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. And, um, that's about a solar garden going in somewhere nearby to the township, Paintsville Township. So if anybody wants to attend that, that is the date and time, the Stearns County Service Center.
Is that the one, Ron, across from the ponds?
No, that's the one where the gardens are.
This is Dunick's property.
Oh, I didn't look. Oh, is it, which one is it? Is it the one where the gardens are?
This one says, 293rd, that's just north of the ponds.
Oh, well, that's a different one than there, yeah, the other one.
Yep.
There was one.
It's just north of what's there now.
Oh, where's their ponds? Correction, this is up, 293rd, yeah.
Okay.
The other side where they fly the plane.
Oh, yep.
Yeah.
That was.
This is not even north of this, this is.
All kinds of solar.
Jones's gravel pit.
Right, because.
Yeah, we're in there. We're full of solar.
All right, and that is it for our informational, and with that, we will adjourn.
Up on top of the hill, just glanced at it.
I do.